Welcome to the Monday, November 18th, meeting of the Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please stand while the young men from Eastchester Boy Scout Troop 353 present the colors and we will have Patrol Leader Jack Flannery lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Color guard advance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Ready to. Color guard post fellas. Color guard dismissed.
Excellent job, thank you. Will the deputy clerk please call it off?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Quigley.
Present.
Trustee Luise.
Present.
Trustee Hayes.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am present. Before we get to our first presentation tonight, I would like to take a moment to pay tribute to Nicholas Varela, who died tragically last month while working for the Eastchester Sanitation Department. Nicholas is survived by his wife, his daughter, his parents, and many friends and family in our community. Nicholas was 42 years old. He had worked for the sanitation department for about five years, and this tragedy underscores the dangers that all of our sanitation and highway staff encounter on a daily basis. So I'd ask that everyone please stand just for a moment of silence and Nicholas is on. Thank you. Well, we have a lot of Boy Scouts here tonight, so our first presentation is going to be from the Boy Scouts. The young men from Troop 353 have, for the past few years, donated their time to sell bottled water at our annual fireworks event, and all for the purposes of collecting money for the Toccoho senior citizens. So at this point, I'd like to ask Joey Panico if he'd please come up to the podium and maybe, oh, no, I'm sorry, Dylan Panico. Yes, please come on up to the podium, and I'll let you identify yourself and your position with the troop and maybe talk a little bit about what you guys did there on the 4th of July fireworks show.
My name is Dylan Panico. Right now, I am on my way to Eagle for Boy Scouts, and down at the fireworks, we sold bottled water to help out the senior citizens. And on behalf of the Boy Scout Troop 353, Eastchester, New York, please accept this small donation.
That's very nice. So we have somebody here from the Toccoho senior citizens. We have the director of the senior citizens, Jennifer Vetromile, and she has brought some other fine people she's going to introduce as well.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Vetromile, and I'm the Director of the Toccoho Senior Center, and I have with me Juliette Stigment, who is the Treasurer of the Senior Citizens Council of Bronxville, Eastchester, and Toccoho, and Laura Sarassi, who's our President. So on behalf of all the members of the Toccoho Senior Center, I want to express our appreciation for this donation. We know how hard you boys work to do this, and, you know, all the seniors have a special place in their heart for all of you. They have grandsons, children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, I think, who've all participated in Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, so we'll put this money to good use, and thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the amount of the money that they collect is always in direct relation to how hot it is, and since it's always 100 degrees there, they always seem to collect a fair amount of money for you. So we're happy they do this, and we're happy that they're able to contribute to our community, and there's no better group of individuals that I'd like to see that go to, so congratulations. The next presentation we have tonight is going to be from the Community Fund, and we have here tonight Melinda Burge, who's, yes.
Mr. Jeff Roar.
Oh, yes, Jeff too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and everyone. My name's Jeff Roar. I'm the current President of the Community Fund, and I am joined by Melinda Burge. Melinda is our Executive Director, one of our two employees of the Community Fund, but our lead executive director. And thanks for letting us take just a couple of minutes today to remind everyone of the critical importance that the Community Fund plays, the role that we play in the Toccoho and the greater Bronxville, Eastchester community. Now, 94 years ago, 1919, a group of people like us met and concluded that additional financial resources were necessary to meet the critical needs of our community. And the Community Fund was established, and last year, we raised and gave out nearly $600,000 to 24 local agencies and programs in our community. And there are two things that are really important here, is the money that is raised stays in our community, and it's invested back into our community. And secondly, you might say, well, how do we know it's being spent well? And we have a number of volunteers from across the community who evaluate the various agencies and actually make recommendations on how they can add more value to the community. So you might say, you know, what impact does the Community Fund really make? And sometimes I think, what would it be like if we didn't have the Community Fund? You know, we fund, we put money aside, and every three years, we buy a new ambulance that serves all of our local residents. So many of you hopefully have never had to use it, but have seen it and may have had relatives who've had to use it. We have preschool, Andrews, I think we're very familiar with that, Early Learning Center, and Toccoho Youth Programs with the Toccoho Police. We have after-school programs when parents can't be home, kids that otherwise might be on the streets. We have a flu shot program, in fact, I think we just had it recently, Toccoho Community Center. We have a number of counseling programs, Maxwell Institute that we support, E Cap down the street that we support here, and people with special needs are given the ability to play sports and to participate in activities that we just, the rest of us, just take for granted. So just to sum up, the bottom line here is that the Community Fund really makes us a better, more desirable, and a safer place to live, and it's a really good investment for our community, and we very much appreciate the support that we've had in the past. The needs continue to be very great, and so we would hope that our local residents would continue to support the Community Fund. And thank you for letting us crash the meeting.
Well, thank you so much for coming tonight, and in addition to that, you also are now underwriting costs for our trolley operation.
No, that's true.
Which is a big benefit to the Toccoho seniors, so thank you. Thank you very much. So everyone should drive by the signs that we have on our fences, and it's that thermometer that we're all familiar to see, and make sure you make your contributions to the Community Fund, because that money does stay here, and I want to see that red thermometer get all the way to the top.
Can I add one thing?
Yes, please do.
One thing that we do, every March, we do our evaluations, and that's what determines how much money we give out, and the sooner we get the thermometer up to that goal, the easier it is for us to know how much we have to give out, because what we give out is directly correlated, directly relates to how much we raise this year. So it's very beneficial for the community, and it makes our job a lot easier if we get the thermometer up early, and then we know what we have to give out.
Want to get that thermometer right off the Richter scale?
You see, Melinda is our Executive Director.
Thank you, and thank you very much for coming tonight, I appreciate it. We're going to move briefly into the rest of our agenda. We have no public hearings tonight. I'm going to ask now for the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 7th. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Approval of the minutes of the special meeting of November 6, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Do we have any correspondences?
No, we do not.
We do not. So our first appointment tonight is the appointment of Phil White and Alice Wade as village historians for a term to expire on April 1, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I just want to personally thank the Whites. I want to thank them both, you know, they are wonderful representatives of Toccoho's historical preservation. They spend countless hours with the Historical Committee. They're here every Wednesday morning, and I can think of no better individuals to take on this responsibility, and I want to thank you personally, Mayor. And I'll take a real quick.
We get the first word. Handle that.
I'd like to thank you for appointing us to this position. We actually love coming here and working on the history. I'd like to introduce the members of our committee, if I may.
Please do.
Betty Gallo. Stand up, please. Ann Carapella, and Arlene Gruber, and these ladies work tirelessly for us. I want to thank the mayor. I'd like to thank the mayor and the Board of Trustees for their support, and I'd like to thank Jackie and Camille in the Clerk's Office, because when we get into a spot where we need some help on the Internet, they're there for us, and we thank them for that. And for June Nickerson, our videographer, and Nick Zanzano Jr., set up our website, and there are over 200 pictures of old Toccoho, and it's so exciting, if, for those of you who have cable, please turn it on. I get so excited every time I see it. So thank you, Nick, for that. We wanted that for so many years, and it's come true for us. We would like to encourage our residents to visit us on Wednesdays from 9:00 to 12:00 at Village Hall. If you were married in our community, we would love to have your wedding picture. We have two albums of family pictures of weddings and children and grandchildren. It's just so exciting to see that. So if you have those pictures, please bring them down. And also, if you find any old newspapers, some people have old Toccoho records. We did find one from 1897, and we were so excited, we were screaming. We'd like you to be part of our history. It's so interesting, and we do, in spite of the hard work, we do have fun cataloging them. And we have received so many wonderful things. Tuskegee Hermann Edward Woodward came here and with the mayor, and we listened to his story. It was just wonderful, and he gave us the statue. There's only 60 statues, and we have one. We have bottles from Borough's Welcome, from Leewood Beverages, we have a trolley bell. That was so exciting. I rang the bell, and everybody thought it was an air raid or something, and it all ran out. So please come and visit us, and thank you again for allowing us to do this. It's wonderful.
Thank you so much for your service.
She said I'm not supposed to talk too long. I'd just like to make a couple of comments too about Ernie Zaki, our predecessor. I don't know how well you know him, well, I know you do, Steve, but he used to have that store on Fisher Avenue there, and we'd go by and look at all the old pictures. If you had a chance to visit him in his apartment, he didn't have a living room, he had a media center, where he would tape things and catalogs them and make our CDs, which we have a number of them out there. So in his memory, we certainly are going to continue the work that he did. A couple of other things. You know, Toccoho is very famous, but for a lot of different reasons, and I just want to give you a few so I won't hold up your meeting. As you know, the marble industry was the big thing. The marble came out of our quarries, went into so many famous places. There's a list of about 50 or 60 that we have, and I'm sure that there's more. Police Athletically began here in Toccoho. The Westchester Municipal Officials Association started here in 1937 when Mayor Crouch, that is his name, Crouch, he called all the mayors of all the villages and said, "Look, we want to get rid of some of these mandates." If it sounds familiar, that's when it started. The fact that we have two railroad stations in our community, the only village in all of New York State that has that, and somewhere between Crestwood and Toccoho, there's a turntable that has been buried, where they used to turn the trains around and go back to New York City. The Parkway Oval, very famous, it had a major prize fight back in 1898, Peter Pombler and McGovern, across the fight was over in two minutes, and there was a lot of disappointed people, and a lot of lesser royalty came from England to see it. Many people don't know that a number of ballplayers, professional ballplayers, came up here and played with the Robins on a day off, whether it be a Monday or whatever day. People like Crosetti, Joe Dugan, even Satchel Paige came up here too, and one, my favorite team, the New York Giants, Ernie Longbody started playing baseball here in Toccoho. So we have quite a history, and we hope that we could talk some more about it to the general public. And anytime you want to come and visit us, happy to have you.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you for the appointment.
Thank you. And thank you for recognizing Ernie Zaki too. He was our historian for a long time. He's missed, as we know, he passed within the last year, and he had the Crestwood Market Store, and this time of year, I'm sure you're going to definitely know what I'm going to say, he always would play that nice Christmas music, and it would echo all throughout the Crestwood Business District, so we certainly miss all that. But thank you very much, appreciate it. Our next business item tonight is.
Mayor. You want a roll call?
Oh, we didn't do a roll call yet. Oh my goodness, sorry.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Thanks for keeping me on my toes there, John. Our next business item is Resolution Number 1, Promoting Lawrence Rota to the Position of Police Sergeant effective November 18, 2013, with a probationary period of 26 weeks. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. As I mentioned last month, we're very fortunate here in Toccoho to have an extremely well-run police department. With a great department comes with it a great pool of candidates for management-ranked positions to choose from. So in his time on the force, Larry has demonstrated excellent management qualities, and I'm sure he'll provide the department with many years of leadership experience. Any of the other board members want to just talk about Larry before we swear him in here?
Thanks, Mayor Eklund. Just to echo your sentiments, I think we were all very impressed with Larry when he came before us about six weeks ago. Happy to see him promoted to this position. I think it's well-deserved and well-recognized, and we wish him the best in his new responsibilities. We think he'll make a great addition to the leadership of the Toccoho Police Force.
Thank you.
And to further echo that, when we met with Larry a couple of months ago, I was just so impressed with not only the diversity and the depth of his experience and the various things he did, but his just whole demeanor, his approach, that this is somebody who's going to be a great leader for the Toccoho Police Force, and we knew that would be just a matter of time, and so we're glad the time has come.
Thank you. Larry, best of luck in your new endeavors, and you have nothing to worry about, you're going to be fine. Good luck to you.
And I as well very much wish you all the best, Larry. It is very much well-deserved. I know you'll excel in this position, and just again, I wish you all the best and be safe.
And with that, I know Larry's whole family's here, and his wife Kathy, you want to help us out with this?
Sure.
Great. Do you want to grab the mic? Oh, yes, please. Thank you, Chief. Larry, if you stand here, we're, and if you would hold the Bible, and you know you want to have your left hand, and you want to please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Larry Rota.
I, Larry Rota.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police sergeant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police sergeant.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Just wanted to say a few words. First off, I want to thank the Village Board for the promotion of police sergeant. Since my first day as a police officer, I admired the excellent leadership from Chief John Costanzo. The chief has inspired me from day one. I'm very fortunate to work for such a great leader, working every day for a true leader in every aspect is something that has made me a better officer, a better person, and I believe will make me an effective first-line supervisor. The Village truly has one of the finest police departments in Westchester County. As a police officer of the Village, a resident of the Village, and a taxpayer of the Village, I feel fortunate enough to be part of such an excellent municipality. The Village is a hidden treasure of Westchester. I want to thank my wife Kathy for all her support. Being married to a police officer and their hectic schedule is tough. Imagine my house at that time with all the kids. I want to thank my mom and sister for all their support, and I wish my dad could be here, but I know he's looking over me. Thank you again, and I promise I will do the best in my new position as police sergeant. The mission statement of the Toccoho Police Department is to protect the quality of life in our community in partnership with those we serve. I remind myself of this mission statement each and every tour. I look forward to interacting with residents and citizens in my new position as police sergeant, and I promise I will treat each and every resident with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, every single day I go to work and we look at the workforce, and I never try to take for granted the caliber of people that work for the police department. So when we have an opportunity to do a promotion, and I get to showcase at least three candidates before the board, you know, and for the board to see the accomplishments of the dedicated members of the department, and for them to articulate all of the outstanding achievements that they've made, I sit there very proud of not just the candidates, but every single member of the police department. And as was discussed just a month ago when we promoted Andrew Zorolnik, how difficult it was to pick one individual of three because of the caliber of the three people that were up before the board. And we were fortunate that an opportunity arose to promote a second sergeant, and very proud and very happy that Larry Rota is now a member of the supervisors of the Toccoho Police Department. And the third individual, Steve Leoni, I have to mention him because he, again, exemplifies all that's good with the Toccoho Police Department, and hopefully his day will come also down the road. So I stand here very proud of every member of the department, very proud of Lawrence Rota. You know, from the first day Larry put on a uniform, he tried to make not only himself a better police officer through education, you know, he got his bachelor's degree, he's working towards his bachelor's degree as we speak now, always striving to better himself, but make the department better. You know, he volunteered, as you can see, very busy with his family, and he loves every one of them and spends a lot of time with them, but he worked so hard to make our fleet safe and efficient for every member of the department, to be proud of the way the police cars look, and from an economic standpoint, to make sure that we're most efficient in our repairs and replacement of these vehicles. That's just a snapshot of the many, many things. You know, he works a midnight tour at 9 o'clock in the morning, either me or one of the lieutenants is calling him about, you know, scheduling and maintenance of a police vehicle, as an example, and, you know, never misses a stride, just continually looking to better this place, better himself, and we're all the better for it. So congratulations to Lawrence, and we're all certain that he's going to do a fine job. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on this new promotion we have here tonight?
I think so.
Yes, we do.
Good evening. George Papa Demetrio, the Chief of the Auxiliary Police here in Eastchester, who also participates with the Toccoho Police Department too. And I just want to echo everything that was said tonight. Being one of the last ones to go, obviously everything was said, but I do want to say this. Before Larry became a police officer here in Toccoho, he was part of our Auxiliary Police in Eastchester, and just before he got called up to come in for an interview, I was one of the reference checks from the police department here about Larry. And I have to say that what I said that day exemplified exactly what Larry portrays now. And when I vividly remember the conversation that I had with the officer who called me, and I said, "Larry is very responsible, he loves what he does, one day he does want to become a police officer," just all those good qualities about him. And I look at him today, and I look at him when I come down here to do an event here in Toccoho, and I see how Larry is. You guys picked an unbelievable individual to become sergeant. We're very proud of him. We have our two deputy chiefs from the Auxiliary Police Department here tonight, Nick Jarrell and Gene Schibber, and on behalf of the entire Auxiliary Police Department, I have to say that we're very proud of him, and we'll continue to watch him as he supervises his department. Thank you.
Thank you very much, George. Anybody else? Well, if not, we're going to take a two-minute recess. We'll just allow Larry to hit the bricks with his family. I know he doesn't want to sit around for our boring agenda tonight, so again, thank you very much. Congratulations. Not a total empty room. Resolution Number 2 this evening is to approve and authorize the renewal of the limited cabaret license to Angelinas of Toccoho, 97 Lake Avenue, Stevens Green, 12 Fisher Avenue, and Growler's Beer Bistro, 25 Main Street, the quarry at 106 Main Street, Mambo 64 at 64 Main Street, for a period of one year, November 1, 2013, to October 31, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number 3 is to ratify board action to approve and to authorize the village clerk to issue a special permit under the cabaret license to Joe's Quarry Pub, LLC, DBA, Chianti Restaurant of Westchester for jazz and blues for Saturday, October 19, 2013, from 8:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution Number 4 is to ratify board action to approve and In favor. Resolution number four is to ratify board action to approve and to authorize the closure of Marbledale Road to Stewart Avenue on October 31st from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. for the Westchester Parks Neighborhood Annual Halloween Parade. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number five is also to ratify board action to approve the use of the Tocco trolley by the Tocco Eastchester Daisy Girl Scout Troop, 2151, on Tuesday, October 29th, starting at 3:45 p.m. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And just a little discussion on this. We're going to kind of tighten up. Trustee Quigley has offered to go ahead and work on tightening up a village policy on the use of our trolley, so hopefully we'll have something done by early next year.
Yes.
Thank you, Trustee Quigley.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number six is authorizing American Express to set up a table to distribute flyers and promotional items as part of their Small Business Saturday initiative and sponsoring parking meters on Saturday, November 30th, 2013, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Insurance shall be provided and supplied as determined and approved by the village board of trustees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Actually, just one comment. If I understand, this is going to provide free parking for shoppers in Tocco on that date, so it's a little bit of an incentive to come and visit the stores here in the village.
Free parking. Mm-hmm.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number seven is authorizing the mayor to execute and enter into an intermunicipal agreement with the county of Westchester pursuant to which the county, through its Department of Public Safety, would provide the village police department with communications and dispatch services through the midnight shift. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We're going to have a little discussion on this. I just want to, first of all, say there's a lot of thanks to go around in getting this program off the ground. I want to personally thank our county executive, Rob Astorino, and our county legislator, Sheila Marcot, as well as the Public Safety Commissioner, George Longworth, for working with Tocco on the program. Our police chief, John Costanzo, has done a fantastic job in assembling all the working parts of this, so I'll ask him to come on up and kind of walk us through how this is all going to happen.
Thank you, Mayor. At the Tocco Police Department, we continue to strive for excellence. One of the things that we do to stay modern and to stay up to date is to be a New York State accredited law enforcement agency, and we're one of about 20% of law enforcement agencies in the state that go to the extraordinary methods to be accredited. And what that means is that we meet or exceed professional standards in law enforcement. And one of the things that we need to constantly do is self-evaluate to improve our services, our productivity, and the safety of the public, as well as our police officers. In late 2012, we conducted an internal analysis on ways to improve the department through greater efficiencies. This while maintaining our policing styles and philosophies, maintaining our response time, levels of supervision, and our community policing activities. We looked at staffing levels, calls for service, workloads per shift, and our communications. We focused in on the midnight-to-eight tour, 12 a.m. to 8 a.m., because of the low number of calls for service. And then looking at that, we looked at the desk officer workload. We knew that our patrols were very active, in proactive patrols, making traffic stops, stopping suspicious persons. And because of the activities of our patrols, it was one of the contributing factors for the low calls for service. We began to look at the feasibility of turning over our midnight dispatch services to another agency. We looked at local departments, Eastchester and Bronxville in particular, versus a larger agency such as the county police, and we weighed the pros and cons of each. We looked at what our local departments have, very similar to us, is one police officer assigned to the desk duties as a dispatcher in each agency. And what we realized is very often, when we're busy, they're busy, whether it's weather-related, whether it's a pursuit that goes through the jurisdictions of all three towns, whether it's an unusual event, a disturbance of some kind. All three dispatchers become inundated with 911 calls, with calls for service. And then we looked at the county police, who has a redundancy in the dispatching services. They have a minimum of three dispatchers and many times five or six. So we felt that when the department became very busy, when the calls for services, whether it be a terrible accident or the incidents that I just named, they would be able to handle the multitude of calls that came in simultaneously, and we would not be burdening our local departments with the one person being overwhelmed. So we went to Westchester County Department of Public Safety to see if this was something that we could do. I met first with Commissioner Longworth, just he and I, and we discussed the merits of what we could do, and he thought that it's something they could do without costing the county any additional money, that their existing staffing levels of dispatches could easily handle the calls that Tocco would produce. So at that point, both of us involved our command staffs. In my case, it was Lieutenant Race DeBeal and Lieutenant Margaret Bellis. On his end were chiefs and inspectors and some of his captains to develop policies and procedures on how this could work. Of course, the village board was brought in, and we had your full support in bringing about this shared service, as well as you mentioned, the county executive, Rob Astorino, as well as the strong support of our county legislator, Sheila Marcot. I met with Sheila, we went over all of the different scenarios. I think she was very comfortable that what the county could do for the village was only benefiting the village. There was no drawback to what she was helping to provide on the county level. And then I had to go to our partners, the Eastchester and Bronxville Police Departments, because what it does mean is that they have to, as we all do every single day, work with each other. Because when we handle a prisoner or things get very busy in the village, we would have to rely on them for backup and for helping to respond for calls for service. And this is, you know, an unwritten agreement that's in place on 31 years as a police officer, long before that. So we work so very well together. Our partnership is stronger than ever. I know that somebody brought up at a town board meeting that one of the reasons why we didn't go to the Eastchester Police was something along the lines that we didn't have the confidence in the Eastchester policemen. It couldn't be any further than truth. We're able to do this, what we're doing with the county, because of the support on the local level with both Bronxville and Eastchester. So that's very important to us, and we couldn't do it without them. So what Lieutenant Race DeBeal and Margaret Bellis did work on was our internal protocols, as well as with the county command staff on how we answer 911 calls, how we answer non-emergency calls, our radio communications, our records management, and our internet communications. All of these things, over the last several months, have been worked out with meetings. We have developed policies and procedures to address this new means of communications. We had to revamp many of our policies and procedures through our general order manual, and all of those things have been worked out and are in place. We put a 911 emergency phone right outside of the police department for the times that if somebody, very rarely, I think in the history of the last, with cell phones and things that are out there, maybe once every five years, somebody comes to the police department looking for assistance during those hours. But just to cover all the bases, we installed a 911 phone right outside of the police station. So in the event that somebody did need to come to the police department in an emergency, they'd pick up the 911 phone and go directly to the county police. They'd dispatch a Tocco police officer, they'd be here within moments. So what it means to the public is, we think it's going to be a seamless level of communications, just as is now. If they picked up the phone in an emergency to dial 911, the only difference is that a county police officer will be picking up the phone. The same response from the Tocco Police Department will still be in place, same number of officers, the same quick response time that we've all become accustomed to is still there. And what it actually did is freed up officers to be, more officers on the street. So rather than with staffing levels that have been recently reduced, not having to reduce the number of patrol officers, what this does is keep the staffing levels the same on the eight-to-four, four-to-12 tour, and on the midnight tour, it actually schedules an additional officer 40% of the time. So more often than not, we're going to have more officers on the 12-to-eight tour than we have out there right now. So it's a huge benefit to Tocco Police Department, but more importantly, to the residents of the Village of Tocco. We'll have more officers out there doing proactive patrols and stopping crimes from happening before they happen. A huge benefit to our constituents. So it maximizes our resources through this wonderful shared service. What it does not do is relinquish the command and control of our police department. We still have a supervisor assigned to the midnight tour. In fact, it adds additional supervision through scheduling. And so we have not relinquished any of our command and control. The police department, it is not a merger, it is not a consolidation, it is not a step towards that. I think if anything, it helps ensure the autonomy of the Tocco Police Department by through greater efficiencies. So I think it's a huge plus. Again, I can't be more thankful to Commissioner Longworth and his staff, to the county executive, Rob Astorino, and our local legislator, Sheila Marcot, and of course, to this village board for being open-minded, for being, you know, progressive in our thinking and how to provide the best police services to the people of the Village of Tocco. So.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
You really did cover the bases on this, and I just think that, you know, we've talked about this for an awful long time, and one of the things I think about is, you know, did we really spearhead something here? And I wonder whether or not a lot of other villages all throughout New York State are going to go ahead and maybe seize the opportunity that we've done here, which is, I mean, it's no additional cost to the county. It's a huge benefit for us here in Tocco, and it was great thinking on your part for this. So thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Very helpful.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Do we do a roll call on that?
I can do it, yes.
See, I caught myself.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number eight is to accept a $5,000 grant from the Generoso Pope Foundation as it relates to the Winterfest event scheduled for Saturday, December 7th, starting at 6:00 p.m. with tree lighting, caroling, and ice skating, and Sunday, December 8th, noon to 5:00, live music, skating, hayrides, and live reindeer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much, again, to the Generoso Pope Foundation. They underwrite this every year for us, and it kind of gives us that whole Rockefeller Center feel right in our downtown square.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor to retain the services of Joseph Lemichak of Color Tone Audio-Visual Consultants. Do I have a motion for this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And just to note, this firm is going to design and prepare the bid spec for the overhaul of our audiovisual services for the planning, zoning, village board, and any other meetings that occur in this room. And it's not, it's not, I'm just laughing because every board meeting we have, I mean, we have to wave our hand, is it working, and this and that, so hopefully there will come a time where that's all fixed.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
Very much in favor. Resolution number 10, standard workday and reporting. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby establishes the following as standard workdays for elected and appointed officials, and will report the following days' work to the New York State and local employees' retirement systems based on the record of activities maintained and submitted by these officials to the village clerk. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 11 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the county of Westchester to access the Westchester County Clerk's land records and legal files. The memorandum of understanding shall be for an initial term of one year, to terminate on December 31, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. Resolution number 12 is approving payment of vouchers in the amount of $427,513, consisting of abstract number 19 for $45,535, abstract number 20 for $275,718, number 21 for $3,023, and abstract 23 for $103,236. The three largest invoices paid were $122,702 for medical insurance premiums for the month of November 2013, $25,192 for the purchase of a 2013 Dodge Charger for the police department, and $24,500 for a progress payment for the independent financial statement audit for the fiscal year ended May 31, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Hayes.
In favor.
Mayor Ackland.
In favor. And this will bring us to our departmental reports of the boards, and I'll ask the chief if he has anything tonight.
I'll be brief, Mayor. I'd like to take the opportunity to give a plug to the Community Fund. Some of the programs that were described earlier, particularly with the youth programs with the police department, we cannot fund, we cannot do the DARE program, we couldn't have the Cops for Kids event, the bicycle safety event, the National Night Out event that we have. All of these community outreach programs that we do, including DARE, and some of the other educational programs that we have in the high school and middle school, could not be done without the financial support of the Community Fund. So I just wanted to thank them publicly, and, you know, as they plead for funding, I just ask that our residents consider that when they're writing their checks. They're a great asset to our community. I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, the village board and all of our residents. With that, it's a very well-traveled holiday weekend with traffic safety as a priority for us at the police department. So we will be joining police departments all across New York State in strictly enforcing the occupant restraint laws, as well as the driving law, intoxicated, impaired laws. So we want to wish everybody a very safe and enjoyable holiday, and just know that we will be out there with added patrols to make sure that everybody returns home safely. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Frank, do you have anything tonight?
Hi, Mayor, board members. I also want to send my condolences to the family of Nick Ferella. I also wanted to wish Larry congratulations on his promotion to sergeant. And I really don't have much, but I just want to reiterate what's going on on Winterhill Road. We have a water main break on Winterhill Road with a 16-inch water main, and the residents that are affected are probably Winterhill, Fulling, Gifford, Henry, McKinley, that whole general area. They'll be out of water probably, it's about 1:00, 4:00 o'clock this morning, until they complete the services.
When did that start?
It started actually earlier this week, but it progressed. Once they started excavating, the 16-inch main just happened to burst, so they had to shut off the water services, the main valve leading to the 16-inch main, shutting services to all the residents in the area. They are working on it, they're gathering all the material they needed, and they're presently there trying to repair it. Other than that, I don't have.
You want to talk a little bit about leaf pickup or anything?
Oh, leaf pickup has been going well. I'm not going to go through my leaf spiel again.
That's all right, that's okay.
But, yeah, we're moving along. We have two trucks out. Again, there's no set schedule. We're just moving as we go along. I would say in a couple of weeks, we should be all cleaned up, doing well. The Crestwood project is moving along. The contractor is definitely moving along. I know it's a little bit of an inconvenience. I know it's a little bit of an inconvenience for the establishments in the area, but we do restore parking. Parking is a little hectic at first, in the morning hours, but as the day progresses, you know, we are freeing up all the parking spaces there. It's a little bit of an inconvenience at first, but we are moving along, really progressing well.
Great.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Frank.
Everybody have a great holiday. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Frank. Bill? Bill Williams, our building inspector, facilities manager.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Just two little items tonight. First item would be that we've contracted with a third party for our natural gas supply with a savings of 25% over last year.
That's good. Wonderful.
And then the second item that I'd like to let the board know about is that over the last couple of weeks, we received about 10 truckloads of Tocco marble, some through our developer and some through the contractor down on Columbus. So I just wanted the board to know that the ordinance does work.
That's an awful lot of Tocco marble, and we have somebody who's sitting here tonight who's responsible for part of that. Mateo, would you like to come on up and stand next to Bill Williams for a second? Just kind of refresh the public as to what you did here some time ago.
Yeah, for my Eagle Scout project, I actually helped create an ordinance that would basically let stuff like this happen. I mean, if I didn't go out and show to the board that I, there was a sufficient amount of marble that needed to be preserved, something like, all this, was it 10 truckloads?
10 truckloads.
That's, how many pounds do you think that would be? Like, is it like a lot? Well, a lot of marble. It would just be thrown away, or I don't even know what would happen to it, but I'm really happy to see that my hard work paid off, and it's, you know, it's being, it's happening, it's happening.
Well, we're so happy that you did, because what you did is you established a new system where we now require anyone who's coming in to pull a building permit to sign an actual form, and giving us the opportunity to go ahead and salvage and preserve that Tocco marble. And 10 truckloads recently, I know there were some others some time ago. And, I mean, we repurpose all that Tocco marble. We use it on all of our masonry projects that Frank has a masonry team, they're constantly using that all throughout the village.
That's awesome.
So, thank you very much. I mean--
No, it's my pleasure.
--you've done something wonderful for our community. And Bill, thanks for keeping on top of that, too.
Thank you. I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea what at least part of the marble is going to be used for? Or like--
Well--
--that specific?
What we do is, we actually hold on to it. You know, we have a mason who's wonderful, he's an artisan. So we've used some of the Tocco marble for, we use it a lot for any of the monument trees, any of the monument plaques--
Oh, yeah.
--that we mount. I know he's used it to create some walls. There's a wall up on Sylvan, or on Lincoln Avenue, where there's some Tocco marble in there. So he, now that we have it, and depending on the size of it, if we got, I don't know if we got any big chunks, big pieces of marble, a lot of that?
Did you look at any?
We did.
Nice ones. Awesome.
So, I mean, we use it for monuments all throughout the village, as well as any construction projects that the village is undertaking itself, so--
Great.
Yeah, you'll see it. You'll see it popping up for sure.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the other thing, Mayor, is I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Bill. You, too.
You, too.
Attorney John Cabral?
Mayor, just one thing to mention in the action, I had mentioned this at the work session as well, concerning 99 Main Street, there's a court conference scheduled for November 22nd, at which time we're going to be asking permission of the court to make a motion to dismiss. We believe that permission would be granted, and we'll proceed with the motion. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you very much. Camille, anything for us tonight?
No.
Nothing at all. Thank you. Miscellaneous business, the next village board meeting is going to be on Monday, December 9th. Village offices will be closed on Thursday, November 28th, Thanksgiving, and Friday, November 29th. DPW is closed on Thursday in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. And just to let everyone know that normal garbage pickup will occur on Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. Our Winter Fest celebration in Depot Square is on Saturday, December 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and Sunday, December 8th, from noon to 5:00 PM. The Crestwood Holiday Fest will be occurring in the Fisher Avenue parking lot on Sunday, December 15th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and there will be music and live reindeer. The reindeer will be back. And this will bring us to our Board of Trustees member reports. And we are going to start with your deputy mayor of the Village of Tocco, Thomas Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor Eklund. Just to announce the upcoming planning board meeting and sign and awning meeting for the month of November, those will both be on Tuesday, November 19th. The planning board meeting is at 7:30 PM. There will be an architectural review for 100 Main Street, the approval of a new hockey training facility on Marble Dale Road, at 200 Marble Dale Road. There'll be an architectural review for Two Clinton Place, and site plan approvals for 85 Yonkers Avenue, 9 Jackson Avenue, and 199 Marble Dale Road. The sign and awning meeting, sorry, board is meeting also on Tuesday, November 19th, that'll be at 2:30 PM. And the reviews will be of 90 Yonkers Avenue, tucked away, Kaji Sushi and Hibachi, which is 28 Columbus Avenue, and Pure Food and Drink, which is the new drink, healthful beverage store that's opening on 5 Fisher Avenue. I also wanted to follow Mayor's comments with regard, and Chief Costanzo's comments with regard to the new process for having the noon to 8 closing, and the calls going, the call center going directly to the county?
Midnight to 8.
Midnight to 8, sorry. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge Chief Costanzo's work in getting this done, of conceiving of something that I think is an elegant solution, that provides a real value to our village, without having any significant lessening of the essential services that are provided to our villagers. I think that's a wonderful achievement, and to actually be able to project manage it and turn it into a reality is something that, Chief, I believe you're to be commended for, and we're very proud to support it. And to also acknowledge the support that we got from Sheila Marcot and from County Executive Rob Astorino. I think these are things that allow us to preserve the uniqueness of our village and move forward in a way that really, we don't compromise and we save. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Quigley?
Thank you, Mayor. The big news from the library is, a couple of weeks ago, they had the Friends of the Library book sale over the community center. It turned out to be a huge success, raising well over $1,000 for projects that the Friends of the Library will sponsor to benefit not only the Tocco Library, but the community as a whole. It ran for two days. It took up just about the entire floor of the community center, hundreds and hundreds of books, well organized, fiction, classics, pulp, romance, history, biography, coffee table books. It was just wonderfully done, and set a model for the future Friends of the Library fundraises and book sales. A couple of the big events going on with the library right now is, well, continuing, a very popular is Paws and Tails for your children who have reading difficulties or beginning readers. You get to read with a specially-trained dog. It's proved to be a huge success, and this is something you can do. The next session will be actually tomorrow, Tuesday, the 19th, at 4:00 in the afternoon, but you have to check with the library first. This Saturday is a thing called a Telebration, which is a storytelling festival. And the guest storytellers come into the library Saturday at 11:00 to share some of their favorite stories, and all are welcome to here. Something that's sort of lost, I think, in today's, you know, constant electronic media is just old-fashioned storytelling. And it's a chance to really understand characters, and stories, and plots, and events, and so I think it'd be a lot of fun for everybody, for both children and for adults. Then a couple of reminders, the library is closed on, obviously, Thanksgiving Day, but also closed on that Friday as well. But we have our new expanded hours on Saturdays, so we'll be back open on Saturday, November 30th, from 10:00 to 2:00. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Luizy?
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, the seniors will be visiting the Ozalas Gallery at Concordia to see the Rodan Sculpture Exhibit, followed by a lunch at the King China Buffet. And as been mentioned several times throughout this meeting, this is one of those programs that is also sponsored by the Community Fund. And then to end the month of November, on Tuesday, November 26th, the seniors will be celebrating Thanksgiving tea, will be celebrating Thanksgiving with tea and tea sandwiches, which were generously donated by Michelle and Vito Pinto. That's all I have, maybe.
Thank you.
Quite a month.
Okay. Trustee Hayes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just two brief announcements. First, we have a cancellation for our Tree Committee meeting that was scheduled for this upcoming Wednesday, November 20th. That's been canceled, and the next meeting will be scheduled in December, and we'll make sure we post it up on our village website on cable channel. And our next environmental committee meeting will take place the first Wednesday of December, it's December 4th, at 7:30 PM here at Village Hall. That is all I have this evening, Mayor.
Boy, it is a brief meeting, that's for sure. I'll be brief as well. We have a brand-new business that opened on October 30th. I was there for the ribbon cutting. It's called The Groom Spot. It's located at 3 Fisher Avenue. And this is a dog grooming salon, so we wish them all the best, and they have a nice little spot there, and we certainly wish them great success. I wanted to recognize the longstanding dedication of our staff, so I asked our deputy clerk to please reach out to the New York Conference of Mayors, also known as NICOM, and they have officially recognized our staff and issued public service recognition certificates for their many years of service. So we have certificates for some of our employees who've been here for quite a while. They go in five-year blocks of time. And the certificates say, "In recognition of your years of distinguished public service to your community, the New York State Conference of Mayors is pleased and honored to publicly acknowledge your dedication and commitment." And we have them for, our village clerk, Susan Chimera, has 45 years. I know a lot of people think that's impossible, because she only looks 45 years old. We have our Judge David Fuller, 35 years. We have our own chief, John Costanzo, who has been here, he said 31 years, but it's in blocks of time. So I'm going to leave this for you here, Chief. Thank you very much. Most people know him as Big Al, but Al Hagan, who drives the sanitation truck up on the Crestwood section of town, has been with us for 30-plus years. If you ever call down at the yard, you speak to a guy by the name of Jimmy Gizzo. James Gizzo has been with us for 25 years. I just think it's, you know, it's important to recognize staff who've been with you for a long period of time. It just goes to show that, you know, these are committed individuals. You know, they've put their time here into the village, and, you know, it's not just a job for them. It's really about public service. So I want to especially thank them very much. And thank you, Chief, since you're here tonight to take this. So with that, this is the second opportunity to address the board on anything at all. And if there is no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Till next time, Tocco. Have a good night and a very happy Thanksgiving.